This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome, everyone, to the City of Warrenville Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the Hall regular meeting. It is Monday, October 9th, 2023. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format at the location. And if you wish to make public comment, you're more than willing to do or you're more than able to do that here. But if you are online, we do not accept public comments online. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer? Absent.
Excused.
Excuse, thank you. Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. If you would all please stand, if you are able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? Nope. Okay. You may also make comment during the business of the meeting on any of the items that come up. Official and staff comments? Mayor?
Thank you. Just one thing, a reminder that every month you get the Hometown Happenings, which is a wealth of information and a wealth of ways to find information about what's going on in the city. So keep it handy. There are a lot of connections in there that you can, again, find out what's happening. We have some openings on commissions, if you're interested in that sort of thing. And there are certainly other things in there of interest if you are in Warrenville. So keep it handy.
Thank you. City Administrator? Okay. Alderman? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. I just want to let everybody know that in Fermilab, the Letterman Science Center, which is on the other entrance to Fermilab from Arbittavia Road entrance, on October 22nd, Sunday from 1 to 4, they have brought back their Outdoor Family Fair, which is a very fun activity to go to, especially for parents and kids. And number one, you can get into Fermilab without all the special IDs. So anybody can come. You do have to register. So you can do that at their website, F N A L, Fermilab National Accelerator Laboratory dot gov. And they have information, but there'll be science experiments, there'll be guest people doing all kind of crazy science. And hopefully, it'll be a great day. And so anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know, our communications director will be putting the information on our Facebook page and website. So you can also look there. Thank you.
Any other Alderman comments? Okay. Treasure?
No, thank you.
Okay. And Clerk? No comment? Okay. Officials, Phil, I know that you have something to address us with.
Sure. Good evening. I want to take this opportunity to call Zach Jardine up here. He's our new utility maintenance superintendent. I'm just going to give him a chance to introduce himself, give a little bit of background of where he came from, and hopefully, you can see why we're excited to have him on board with us.
Zach Jardine, been here two weeks now. I currently came from Las Vegas. I was there 22 years. Started in Public Works just as a regular worker and worked my way up. I've been married 18 years as of yesterday, three kids, 11, seven, and four months old. So pretty busy, all over the place. I'm glad to be here. The guys have been great. I look forward to working with all of you.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Zach. It was very nice meeting you. And welcome to Warrenville. Okay. Now on to the business of the meeting. Number one item is consideration of the ERP, the EAM, and the Citizens Engagement Software Recommendation. And Director Kukler will do the presentation.
Thank you. Actually, Mary Smith from BayCor is going to do the presentation, but I just wanted to give a little bit of background, remind City Council that back in April, staff interviewed a couple of firms to help assist the city with an assessment of our software needs and ultimately to help staff develop a recommendation or recommendations for software solutions. So over the last five months or so, we've been working with BayCor. And Mary's going to describe that process and what we went through, as well as where we landed in terms of recommendations for software. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mary.
Good evening. As Phil said, my name is Mary Smith. If you've ever heard me present before, you would know I make fun of my mother at this point for naming me that. Nine months pregnant, and that's all she came up with. So my screen's not showing. Means I wasn't sharing. I guess Mom didn't teach me to share well. So I'm going to work on that. So this evening, I will only take a few minutes, but I think this presentation is very informative, or at least I hope it is. And whatever it doesn't answer for you, I hope you take the time to ask. So I think everyone can see now. So with that said, I will... I am on. You know me, I can talk really loud, so I don't want to get too loud. Okay. You let me know if I'm... Thanks. So I want to introduce who BayCor Group is. Again, my name is Mary Smith, and I'm representing BayCor Group. But BayCor Group is a municipal consulting firm, and we focus only on municipalities. We're a boutique firm, and we are small intentionally so that we can keep our attention on our clients. I am the managing partner, and I oversee BayCor, and I touch every single client we have. So we do keep a small number of clients to ensure that quality control is there. One of the things that make us unique is that we understand every department. We don't just understand the finance department, or just Public Works, or even just purchasing or payroll. We understand all the aspects inside of a municipality and how things flow together. We've been working in the local area for more than 20 years, and we focus on things such as selection of software, solving your problems, whether it's communication, automation, or just keeping your environment upgraded and updated. We help with change management to help you absorb some of the changes, as well as helping the citizens become more familiar with some of the new tools that may be made available. As was mentioned earlier, we helped go through a very defined selection process. This is a simplified version of it, but we spent some time looking at what are the needs. We looked at and met with each department and asked what was working and what wasn't working, and what were some of the things that were needed. From there, we set out an RFQ to better understand what was in the marketplace and who would be interested in responding to the city. We did hours and hours of demonstrations. I think, as you see at the bottom, there were nine days of demonstration. We had, every department was involved. We had 29 staff members, and we had eight different vendors demonstrate. We did have additional nine vendors that responded to RFQs, but only eight did demonstrations. From that feedback that we received from your staff, as well as the scoring that we did internally, we were able to identify a few top solutions in which we started to work in identifying the execute section up here with the integration and establish the scope of work. And we defined that scope of work to ensure that it would get done in a reasonable timeframe, but yet be a robust solution. And we're in the process of currently negotiations and attorney review. The software that we're talking about, I'm not keen on acronyms, so I have EAM here. I'm sure you've all heard of it, but it's Enterprise Asset Management. And those are the assets that sit in your enterprise. It could be anything from a vehicle to a boiler to a pump to a generator, all the assets. This building is one of your assets. And inside the building, there's many assets. And there's the Enterprise Resource Planning, or the ERP. And that is also encompasses the entire municipality in the fact that it addresses everything that has a financial aspect to it. So whether that's payroll, the general ledger, or even a permit of a fee, anything that you would apply for or pay for, a business license, all of those sit underneath your ERP. Citizen Engagement is online tools and access for our citizens so that they can access directly support, and whether that's a business license application or a permit application for a new doc, they can do it online if they want, at a time that's convenient for them. And there can be more direct communication back and forth. Or when you're driving home, if you see a pothole, you might want to take a picture of it and just report it at your convenience. These are new options that might come available to you. So in a big picture, the EAM, the Enterprise Asset Management, impacts these areas. And what's especially different is capital planning, budget, and job costing, you will now be able to see more value from. The ERP impacts budgeting, accounts payable, and purchasing. I don't need to read the list to you. But those are your two large systems that go in place, and they work together hand in glove. The Citizen Engagement is a little bit like that funnel is showing you. Takes in requests. It takes in information, and it's automated, and it's tracked, so that we can provide the best service possible and know as things get older and we make sure that we're timely responding to people. So it impacts IT requests, complaints, events, even on calendars, or like you were mentioning, the Fermi event. That could even be transparent on a cellphone, or iPad, or on a desktop. What we're doing differently is, to be frank with you, every solution that we looked at is specific to municipal government. We were not trying to put a solution that's good for the private sector into the municipal government. And every single solution we looked at is tried and true and used in municipalities today, as well as municipalities in the state of Illinois. And another aspect that I mentioned earlier is BayCor. We understand municipalities, and that's what we do. That's all we do. The software selections were out of the box. So what that means to you is we are not developing software. Nobody's developing software. We are configuring the software. So very much like when you go in and buy a cellphone, nobody's designing a cellphone specific for you, but when you get it home, you still got to tell it some stuff, your email, your users. You configure it. Now, my staff gets a little cranky with me when I describe it like a cellphone, but it'll take a little bit longer than that because there's a few more choices there. But that's what we're doing. We're configuring, not customizing. So that's a big difference. So I want to make sure that you know a little bit about how we're going about this. We're establishing a foundation first. So we're looking at the data. We're phasing the approach. It's not going to be all at once. There are going to be multiple pieces over multiple years, but some pieces will come out, and then they'll get better in the next year. So each thing will happen as the other pieces come into play. The plan is, right now, we're working on pre-project data and policy because we want to have the data as good as we can, and we want to make sure we have policies in place that we want the software to support. We're reducing risk by ensuring that staff, first of all, is ready for this, and we're phasing it to reduce the risk. And we're also, again, we reduce the risk by ensuring that we have tried and true solutions in place. We are also going to make sure that we do the data integrity and process testing before we take anything live. Lastly, we're going to make sure that we go back after we're live and make sure that what we planned on happening happened. Because as you can guess, sometimes plans don't actually work out. So we have to, what I like to technically use is a jiggy afterwards. So just a small jiggy here and a little adjustment here. Maybe I said tomato, someone said tomato, and so we want to get on that same page. So after we're live, we step back, and we take a look, and we make sure it's okay, and we wait again a few more months, and we take another look to make sure things are solid. Things that you can expect as we go down the road, data visibility, integrity, mobility, citizen access, and reduction of duplicate and manual work. This is a simple timeline. There is a complicated timeline that takes three pages, and you need an eyeglass to read. But I didn't think you wanted that one. I know Christina wanted it. But with that said, we're starting now, and we are working in the pre-work. And we look forward to about July, August 2024, you know, finishing up with some of the main parts of the project. I will tell you, in 2025, some of the final EAM pieces will be in place. Some of the automation will happen at that time, workflows, and more citizen engagement. Dates are currently best guesses. That is a disclaimer in large print because we don't have contracts finalized. So we're moving forward to keep those dates. I have been doing this a few decades. That's all I'll admit to. So my guesses are really pretty good. Project total cost, and what are we doing? So as I mentioned, we're doing an ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning, an EAM, Enterprise Asset Management. There are a number of integrations, so things talk to each other. And there'll be some implementation support and project management from BayCor Group. The bulk of the dollars will occur in 2024 and 2025 fiscal years. Some project installation expenses will occur in 2023, and there will be some additional costs 2026 and beyond for the final pieces of the project, as well as ongoing support and maintenance. The cost now is on the screen, and the next steps, as you can see, we anticipate. Okay? Questions?
Thank you, Mary. That was, that was great. Very well done because it's very easy to understand.
Thank you.
And I think if anyone is watching, hopefully, they do understand what we're looking at also. So Alderman, questions, comments? Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I just had a question. So we've been, as you well know, we've had another system before that didn't quite work out and meet the needs that we needed. But we kept a little bit of it just to keep things going on, and that company is servicing some of that. Will it ultimately all come together? Or will we just leave that piece over there and then have the big piece? Or does it all ultimately mesh together?
I mean... So those pieces will go away?
Those pieces will go away. Okay.
This is a full replacement.
Thank you.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I have a question in regards to the life expectancy of the product that we're buying into. I'm assuming that this is all updatable, and it's going to be around for a while, but how long is that while?
That's a great question. Thank you.
Can you estimate?
I can't. Technology keeps moving, and so the solutions that we are recommending are all cloud solutions, and those will continue to be updated on a year-on-year basis. In the 80s and the 90s, when we put systems in place, they sometimes stayed more static and didn't get updates unless you went after it maybe five or 10 years. And that's where things tended to need to be replaced. In the current environment, what we're recommending is that you go into the cloud, and it would be updated on a regular basis, once a year at least, and it will continue to grow. So it, the life of the system should be ongoing, as well as the life of the company remains present. So where previously we would say this would be a 10-year solution, I could see it easily being a 20-year or more, as long as they continue to meet your needs.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, I have a couple things. When, in regards to cost for the next steps, that does not include the ongoing maintenance, correct?
That includes some of the ongoing maintenance through year six, but it's not all ongoing maintenance.
Do we have any idea what that cost is going to be roughly, moving forward? And I believe it was based off of the Consumer Price Index also?
So one of them, the cost increase is based on the CPI after the first few years. That's a correct statement. The other solution holds its cost still for five years, and at the renegotiation, we'll renegotiate it.
Okay. And with that, and with that system, we don't own that, right? We don't own that system?
The one system, the ERP system, is a full cloud SaaS solution, and you do not own that software. That's correct.
Okay.
In the case of the EAM, the Enterprise Asset Management, you do own that software, and you can take that in-house at any time that you want. And the break-even point on that was four and a half years.
Four and a half. But for the ERP, we don't own that?
That is correct.
And so after the terms, is that the one that's? Let me think about how I'm going to say this. Is that the one where the prices are fixed with regards to the increase based on the index, or are they not?
It's the index.
Okay.
The ERP that you do not own is a SaaS solution.
Okay.
Based on the index.
Okay. Because basically, I think you kind of knew where I was going, was like after five years, we do all of this, and then they say, okay, it's $250,000 a year for us to maintain this, and then we're kind of starting over.
You know, that's...
It sounds like...
That's something I would ask, too. What I can say is that company that you're buying from has been around for decades, and they haven't, they have a very good retention. I think they're 99-plus percent on their retention, and they're not doing that to their current clients, otherwise they would have left. So I can only say what's happened in the past. Some, I can't predict if, how they're purchased, or what happens in tech moving forward.
Okay.
But, yeah.
And then, I guess the other question was, with the amount of modules and everything that we're including?
Yes.
And then, looking at like a cost, and maybe it's a question for staff, too, would it be better to take some of those modules away and really kind of define what we need versus want kind of thing, and then maybe do it on like a 10-year plan, and then slowly implement things? Only because it just seems like, I'll just tell you what I'm worried about, is that it says significant staff time, significant staff time. And I don't know how they get the stuff done they do now. Right? So then I just start to think, and I'm like, okay, well, if they're spending significant time on here, they're going to end up sleeping here and only get like four hours of sleep instead of six. You know what I mean? So I just worry about that, and I worry if it's just not better to extend that out and then get people familiar with the interface, you know, how everything works and opens. Go ahead, Christina.
City Administrator, thank you. So in theory, yes, we could roll it out over a longer period of time, but what that actually ends up doing is causing those pain points you're worried about for staff time to go on for 10 years instead of two and a half or three. The implementation process itself is what's painful because you're doing all the data cleanup, migration, and if you're doing it in stages, you're doing that data cleanup and migration over and over and over again to keep updating and adding pieces to the system. So it sounds good in theory to extend it, but actually, it's the opposite. It would be, it would be easier, easier relatively, to do it in a shorter period of time and probably less expensive. The other side of that is if you extend it, every time we add those modules, we have to have project management in place. We have to get the implementers from the software solution in place. There's a fee and cost to that. The other part of this is when we looked at the solution as a whole, we looked at how all these pieces fit together. And as Mary mentioned, the ERP, the EAM, the Citizen Engagement piece, it's all part of kind of a bigger puzzle. If you start taking pieces out, the puzzle doesn't quite work on its own. That a fair representation?
Yeah, and if I could add that, I think what Christina referred to is what we call a lot of project fatigue. And the staff will run into project fatigue, and they just won't even hear, I mean, it'll just be noise in the background. We want their focus for a shorter period of time, and I am sure we're not going to fatigue them as much as maybe they had in the past. And I'll also comment that by putting the pieces in place, you're going to get workflows and automation, and that's where you save staff time. So although an example might be, might be painful or time-consuming to put in utility billing, once it's done, there'll be efficiencies gained and improvements on the backside. So then there'd be some gains there where we can redirect effort elsewhere and continue to move forward. So everywhere, there's going to be some efficiencies and some workflows because we're putting the pieces in place. And also, as part of the assessment, staff really made it very clear where the pain points are, and I really don't feel that there's a lot of wants in here. There's more of the needs.
I think all of it's great, just all the stuff that you have. And I think just from community development, just with the contractor license, the permitting, that's all getting up to snuff with other communities and kind of what they do. So I'm all about it. Final thing is just, we've been burned in the past, and then looking through, because I believe you're going to do a lot of the negotiating, right? At least on the contract side, and maybe this is something for the city attorney. But I just wasn't sure if there's something that we could put in there to protect ourselves just in case something happens. Again, I wasn't here when the other process started. I was here at the end, and we were not able to recoup all that time that city staff spent. And I just look at, try and keep everything fair, right? Everyone gets compensated for the time they spend, but then they don't. So I didn't know if there was something we could put in there, as long as we're doing our part, if some other, you know, company or somebody drops the ball in the process, you know, where we could be recouped for that, just so that we're covered again, so that we're not here again in two, three years.
You know, I feel your pain on that. I don't know any other way to say that, but there are cancellation clauses in everything. I don't know of any failed implementation with either of these solutions. When we did evaluate the software that we were selecting, we selected based on the fact that we didn't want to be here again, to be very honest. And so we were very discriminating on what would fit and what would not, and the areas of the risk of the project have been isolated to small pieces that, okay, we could deal with if that, if that has a problem. So to answer your question, can we recoup staff's time? Once it's spent, it's spent. But there are cancellation clauses in everything for failure.
I just think that in there, it said only for contract amount, not for any excess time or energy spent.
Yeah, I've not seen these other companies negotiate beyond that because they, again, they, they don't have a record of failure.
I just wonder on the government side, too, though, they do have liquidated damages in contracts where if X date is not met any day after, then in turn, you know, they are penalized for that. That is in government contracts. But I, you see what I'm saying?
I do.
And it's just, it's just something I have to ask, and... And it's just, it's just something I have to ask and, and see what we can't do, just so that we are protected.
Yeah, your city attorney is volleying that, right?
Okay, okay.
Okay. Alderman Widener?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. While we're on the topic of the staff time, is there any way to qualify it at all? Is there like more staff time expected at the beginning of the project? Does it slow down in the middle and then bump up again in the end? Or can you kind of walk us through what the, what you've seen from your experiences as far as staff demands?
Yeah. So in the ERP, which is the financial side, enterprise resource planning, that project starts a little slow because it's focused on the chart of accounts. And then they do some discovery and so there's a fair amount of work up front and then it does slow down for staff. And then we come back and there's more work effort and then there's a lull again and then there's the go-live. So there are some very clear lulls. As far as the EAM project, that's being done very much phase preparation work being done through the end of this year. And then early next year, you'll start to see us actually go live with the very basics where everybody will just stop and learn that and use it over and over. No additional time will be spent on expanding the knowledge or the functionality. And that might go for a few months, could be as long as six months. So it will create a lull where the familiarity comes, they'll learn to do new things and then they'll create another lull.
So when it's at its peak, if there's one or two lead staff that are directed to work alongside you or be involved in this project, are we looking at their effort being a 40-hour week or 20-hour maximum? Or can you provide some sort of range as far as what, what it might be?
Sure. The staff that's involved will never have a 40-hour week on the project, except during go-live. Then it's all hands, all effort, everything. So at the different phases where we pull things live, there's only one other time that I would consider very time-consuming. It's data checking and process checking. So we've done all the work and we think we've got it. We're looking with the vendor, the vendor's saying, yep, this is what you asked for. Now staff really has to work it and say, yes, this is right or not. So there is some significant time there. So maybe I would say, there's some key staff that are gonna spend as much as 15 hours during those weeks, but they're absolutely paramount to the success of the project from here and the next 10 and 20 years of investment is right there.
And you said 15?
15's the max. I mean, I'm, and I'm pulling a big number because it's, it is that important. If we put more knowledgeable staff on it, we could dilute that a little bit, okay?
Yeah, thanks for getting specific with that. It helps.
Yeah, and then the early parts, you're talking about a couple meetings, you know, you're not talking, maybe a day worth of meetings, but it's, it's never gonna be 40 hours like that.
And then you mentioned data transmission. When data transmission occurs, I always think of the worst-case scenario and the data not being transmitted. And I just wondered with your system, is there like a backup where things are, like if all things go south or become a problem, you have that backed up or in a, in a spot somewhere where you can recreate it and it's not just lost in the transmission?
Yeah, thank you for asking about that. I'm always thinking worst-case scenario. Let me also make a clarification. Bay Corp Group sells no software, okay? We are your project managers and we're gonna help ensure that this project gets done. We're your advocate with your software. So your two software vendors, both of them have backup solutions and they have disaster recovery solutions. Both of them are in the cloud with well-established providers that have redundancy. Can data get lost? Yes. So the part of the project that we care about right now is converting the data. Some data will be converted, but it'll still be on your system. So if the data pulled is bad, we go back and pull it again, okay? If when we pull it and we test, it's no good, we back up, we pull it again and we adjust for what was bad and we do it again. So to answer your question, there is little risk there except for time and energy, which is money. I'm not gonna deny that. And then when the product is live, there is that backup solution entirely. Did that address your question?
Yes, thank you. With the, it, it sounds like some of the software that will be implemented are, is not adjustable, that it's kind of, I don't know, plug and play? Is that how it is inserted?
It is okay to say that some things are not adjustable. An example is, tabbits and credits only work one way, more or less. It is fund accounting, we can't get creative with it. But we could decide to allow one-sided transactions. You pick yes or no, but you can't pick maybe, okay? So you, it is out of the box and it has certain selections that you'll be constrained to. So will it do everything exactly the way you want it? No, you'll need to make some adjustments and say, okay, we're gonna do this a little bit different. It's like moving from an iPhone to an Android. Gotta make some adjustments, but you can still make that outbound phone call.
With the citizen engagement portion of the things that will be introduced, are there possibilities to insert human touchpoints? Like, you know, sometimes I think we all, we all end up in a voicemail system we can't get out of. And I think Warrenville, our city prides itself on being able to communicate with, you know, human, human beings and, and avoiding some, some of that so that if you have a, a question late Friday afternoon, you're gonna be in, able to get an answer before the event happens on Saturday morning or, or Sunday. And I just wonder whether or not this system allows for those, those kinds of human touchpoints, I guess I'd call them.
So none of the systems are gonna eliminate or minimize any of the existing human touch and customer service that the city's well-known for? Those will still remain. What it'll start to introduce is for individuals who maybe like myself only think about that deck permit at 10 o'clock right before I gotta go to sleep. And then I don't think about it again until 10 o'clock the next day. So it helps me kind of launch that and start that. Now, there will be some greater intelligence operating in one of the solutions or one part of this that will allow, if you're searching for something about a deck permit, now the information that'll show on the screen will be about permitting and about that process and community development, more so than about maybe a board meeting. If you start searching about board meetings, it's more, it starts to provide you more intelligent information. So we're moving towards a more intelligent information coming onto your screen based on what you're searching for and what you're asking about to help you find what you want instead of having to figure out where to go.
So there, when I report the pothole too, there's also a response system saying, hey, we got your report or, you know?
So it's-
It's been listed for, you know, somebody to review?
Yeah, so what's neat about the vision on this, and I use the word vision because there is an integration point, is that the citizen will be able to report that pothole or get on your way home. And it'll go right into the system, right to the person that's gonna need to deal with it. Instead of coming into the system, hitting an email, needing to get passed and then repeat, you know? So all those extra touches are also delays without communication back to you. So this is gonna come in, we'll be able to communicate back that we've got it and it's in the system and here's your number. We will also be able to ask questions as part of the vision from the system. The person in the field may say, I didn't see this, or, you know, may ask a question about what you're asking and go direct back to you.
And it can go to multiple individuals in the department, I would assume, if somebody's on vacation or otherwise, you know? Gone from, from their primary spot?
Yeah, so that's, that's what the, the joy of this is, is we no longer have to say, oh, well, you know, this is something that Phil's gonna do and somebody has to know this. So we would, it, it can automatically forward, it can automatically go to multiple people and those are the business rules that you're making a decision about. That's that configuration. That's where you're making a decision about, what is the hierarchy? What is that tree? What is it I wanna do? And it also allows for somebody to oversee and see what's going on and those requests that are out there. So maybe Phil's able to just grab something and say, okay, wait a minute, this person's out unexpected, Jamie's not here, we'll shift it over.
Okay, good. And then I just have two more quick questions. What is the size of your firm? You said you're a small firm, I just wondered what your full-time-
We have 11 to 15 consultants at any one time.
15 consultants?
11 to 15.
Would those be considered full-time equivalent or part-time or?
Oh, full-time equivalent, different projects from GIS to EAM to ERP, specialists in utility billing, whether it be financials across the board.
And then, can you give me a couple examples of some of the other municipalities that you've worked with in Illinois or elsewhere?
So one of the examples that's very similar to your project is the city of Rochelle. And the city of Rochelle also replaced their ERP and their EAM. They're a larger municipality in the, in their utilities because they also have an electric, so the public work side was much more complex, as well as the utility billing was much more complex. So because it had that electric billing. Some of the other cities we've worked with include the city of Joliet on the other side of Siz. Another city we've worked with is Woodbridge. We've worked with Wheaton, we've worked with Naperville, we've worked with Glenview, we've worked with Itasca, we've worked with Rochelle, we've worked with Bloomington. We can keep going.
That's good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Treasure Goodman?
What's your best guess of the, when the general ledger will be up?
We will be live in the financial system, best guess, thank you for adding that, by April of 2025.
Would you, would you try to do that in concert with the fiscal year change?
Doesn't matter. I would not hang up a project, nor would I rush a project for that. There's a lot, there's lots of logic and reasons why. Whether it's the financial system going live, the HR system, the community development, every month of the year, there's a reason to go live and a reason not to go live. We've done it in all quarters. It'll, it'll be fine wherever it happens.
City Administrator?
Just wanted to make a couple last statements. So we talked about staff timing to this, very similar to how we do everything. We'll be putting together work plans for the upcoming budget year. This, this project's going to cover the rest of this fiscal year, fiscal year '25 and probably a good portion of fiscal year '26. So as you're considering whether to move forward with these projects, please also consider that that means potentially that other priorities or projects that are not already in motion have a grant or are considered high priority top items may have to get delayed in order for staff to dedicate the time to this project. We did already have one failed project, we cannot afford to have another one, so I need staff time dedicated to making sure that the data that's going into these systems is of highest quality and that they're doing their due diligence to check that that data's correct. Because once we hit go-live, if the data that went in is not good, it's going to take a lot of time and effort to try to backtrack that and fix it. The other quick statement I wanted to make is, along with the changes of these systems, there are other ancillary changes, policy decisions that we will be coming forward to with to talk about. As Mary said, these are out-of-the-box solutions, so that means there are some things that the city isn't currently doing or maybe doing differently that we may want to look at optimizing to make the best use of the system and to use those citizen engagement tools to make it more efficient for the community, to get good quality data on a regular basis from the residents and from the businesses in town that will make the systems work the best way possible. So there'll be some policy decisions we'll be coming forward with over the next probably six to nine months, I would guess. And then the last thing is, there is a significant GIS component to this that we didn't touch on a whole lot tonight, but part of when you're talking about, hey, there's a pothole we've identified, or I have this issue on my block, or whatever the case may be, that's all data, right? And GIS is our source for that data to know what those assets are, where they are, especially when you're talking overground, underground, et cetera. Our current and past GIS practices, we have one part-time person, that's, it's a full-time position, that's planner slash GIS technician, but GIS has always been a, as time allows, when the planner's not otherwise engaged with planning activities, they focus on GIS. As part of this project, we will need to make a more concerted effort with building our GIS solution. So that is another piece of this that will be coming forward in the next few weeks and there is a cost element to that to get a consultant or some additional staff time to build up the GIS. So I just want that to be very clear and transparent before you move forward with your decision tonight on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Very impressive presentation and you certainly are prepared to answer questions tonight in a, a way that exudes confidence, so we appreciate that. One of the things that I particularly like is this business that we're gonna configure existing software rather than customizing something and coming up with our own solutions. I think that's one of the problems we ran to in the last few years is that folks we were dealing with promised us a customized solution and then they were unable to come up with one that worked and speak about lost staff time. That was a disaster in terms of staff time. So it seems to me there's a couple of significant advantages to using off-the-shelf stuff. One, it's already there, it's already, it's already made and two, people have had experience with it that can help us customize it to our needs. So it kind of simplifies things greatly and I think that's a huge advantage to what you're presenting to us tonight. One other problem that we had with the other folks we dealt with was the significant lack of continuity in terms of project managers. We bounced a number of them and every time someone had to be brought up to speed, it cost us more time and money. I'm very, very confident that with you at the head of this project, it's gonna turn out well and as you plan it. How deep is your bench, I guess? Things happen and that, that is a concern because we've had problems in the past. I would love it that you take this from day one to the very end. If something comes up and you're unable to do that, do you have people on board that would be able to take over at your level?
Yes. So to answer your question again, I am at the top of the organization and I am on every project to help maintain that continuity and that quality on the project. The second thing is that I have multiple people at my level that can execute in my absence. I'm hoping that they're not gonna like upheaval and take over because, although they threaten occasionally. We also have very strong staff that are cross-training. And on this project, we have three primary people that are dedicated to this project and to cross-training each other. In the situation with EAM, Phil, there is somebody that we put behind your primary resource duty to make sure that we have that bench in case the proverbial truck takes any of us out. So we've done our, what I'll call key man plan for your city and that's part of what we do for every city as we go forward. So we evaluate if anyone goes out, what, what is the person and who is that person that's gonna stand up? And then from this point, we're already educating that person who would have to stand up.
And are all those folks relatively long-term employees?
Everyone is long-term with us.
Good, that's good to hear.
I mean, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mary, that was great presentation again and it was very easy to understand, which is very much appreciated.
Okay, that was information only. Onto the second item, consideration of contract for the enterprise resource planning software. Director Kukler?
Thank you. So this item and the next two are gonna be three of the contracts or contract items related to the presentation Mary just made. This item is for the ERP software, which is BSNA. In the agenda summary, there's a, the budgetary impact that kind of is our estimate of how the- the costs will be spread out across the next five fiscal years. And in total, sorry, I realize I didn't put the total in there. It's a little over $452,000 that will be spread out from, starting in this current fiscal year and going through fiscal year '28. As you can see, toward the last couple of fiscal years, that's just the software hosting and the software-as-a-service fees. The bulk of the costs with these solutions tend to fall with the implementation, starting up the projects. And there'll be contract amendments later for Bay Corps services, again, in those first couple of years to help get the software implemented and go live for us. So this contract that's in the agenda back in materials is solid as far as the costs go. The city attorney and the vendor are still working through some of the terms and conditions in the contract, so it's a draft contract. It'll be put on the city council agenda for a final decision, once the city attorney's comfortable with it and the vendor's comfortable with it. And we have a finalized contract to present. But we wanted to get this in front of you tonight so you can ask questions about it, hopefully recommend a city council approval of it. And then, whether it's, it won't be next Monday, so we haven't, we don't, we're not far enough along, but it might be November 2nd that it comes back on the council agenda. And once it gets approved, as Mary referenced in her presentation, we can't start planning, and the vendors aren't going to start placing us in their schedule anywhere until we actually have a signed contract with them. Once we get to that point, then they've got other clients that are on board that are in front of us, and the timings, they're going to fit us in. Mary's very experienced with this, as she mentioned, and she's got an educated guess as far as the timing. And if things keep proceeding, I'm confident that that guess is accurate. If for some reason the negotiations take a while, that pushes back the start of the contract. So with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Alderman, questions, comments? Alderman Weidner?
Yeah, I'm just curious as to how each one of these payments in the coming fiscal year fits into the fiscal year a lot. Like, is there a thought to it increasing by the line, in particular line irons, by 10, 20, 30% in the coming years? And is there, for the total project, is there like a not-to-exceed number that we've kind of circled and understand?
So the $452,176, that would be the not-to-exceed item. When Brooke drafts the resolution, that's going to be the not-to-exceed over the five, if this is six years, period that locks in those costs. Once we hit the end of the agreement, then you start looking at the increase in costs each year. We have to go back and negotiate with the, depending on the vendor, negotiate with them on extending the contract and what the software costs might be in those future years. But this will be the not-to-exceed. And very often, like on a construction project, I might, Brooke and Christina and I have worked it out where, okay, Christina might be authorized to approve a change order up to a certain percentage of the contract. I don't want to do that and set the tone with these vendors from the beginning that there might be change orders or any of that stuff. We want to be able to beat them over the head and say, no, listen, we can't go back to council. I mean, we want to have that leverage to tell them we can't go back to council for a change order. That's a bad thing. It's going to take time. They're going to be mad, you know? And give us a little bit of negotiation where they're going to be discouraged from trying to increase costs or submit for change orders during the course of the project.
So the projection for the coming year's budgets will be able to shoulder the costs?
Yes, yeah, we anticipate.
In the general fund?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
It is City Administrator, White?
I also just wanted to point out, there are some costs in the current fiscal year that we did not budget for. So it is likely or possible that we would have to do a budget amendment for the current year, fiscal year, costs associated with the software implementation.
Alderman Weidner?
Is there an estimate on that amendment as far as what it might be?
Not at this time, because generally, we look at the fund level. And so depending on what all of the expenses are within the fund, we always end up budgeting more expenses than we end up actually spending. So the amendment amount would depend on where we land, and we'll know that closer to the end of the year. It may be that we don't have to do an amendment. That's happened before where we thought we might have to, but I just wanted to raise the question that there isn't funds budgeted this fiscal year for the ERP, even though we knew we were going into this project because we didn't know what we would be looking at in the first year or how long it would take to go through the selection process.
You mentioned some additional consultant costs, too. Can you go into a little more detail about when and how much and who the consultants might be?
So we're still working through that process. We are likely to have some information in front of you at the next Public Works and Infrastructure. Is that, or what's the meeting schedule for that, Phil?
I'm anticipating the Community Development Committee meeting in November.
So the first meeting in November. We're looking at having those consultant fees and what that project's scope would be in front of you.
Would it be possible to have like an entire picture at that meeting as far as like a layout of the total program costs over the next five years so that we can just go into shock?
See them jotting down the number or jotting down the note right now. So yes, we will make sure we have it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we would need a motion. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend that City Council pass a resolution approving a software-as-a-service agreement with BSA Software pending city attorney review.
Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Kruckenberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, consideration of the contract for the enterprise asset management software. Director Kukler?
Thank you. And this is the DTS Viewworks software that's the asset management software. It's primarily for public works. So it's anticipated to be a 12-month implementation, so starting in early January 2024 and working our way through the end of the year. I feel more confident about that because it's a complex program, but it really primarily involves public works. And we're not transitioning from an existing system into this. We're, in that way, in a lot of ways, it's simpler, and I have more control over my staff than, say, multiple departments trying to coordinate together. The total cost for this software is anticipated to be, over the five years, $222,600. As part of this, part of Bay Corps services and the next item are going to be to help public works configure this software. The project lead for this project for Bay Corps had worked for DTS at one point. I think she was also involved from a consulting side of things implementing the software. She's very familiar with it. So we've already started working with her, I think, as of last week to, or two weeks ago, to start some of the pre-work and some of this, developing some of the structure for what's going to go into the software to help make the implementation more efficient and smoother. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any comments or questions? Okay, we'd need a motion. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution approving a software license and servicing agreement with Data Transfer Solutions LLC pending city attorney review.
Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Kruckenberg and a second by Alderman Davalos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number four, consideration of contract amendments for software implementation project management. Director Kukler?
Thank you. So this involves two contract amendments to Bay Corps' existing contract with the city. Amendment one relates to their services for implementation of the ERP software, and that's primarily going to be project management. Their costs anticipate a 15-month implementation, so it'd be starting in spring of 2024, potentially late winter of 2024, and then working through spring of 2025. And that, one of the big reasons, I think, that these two projects or even the citizen engagement will be more successful than the last project that failed is that having Bay Corps on from the beginning to help with negotiations, to help the city from the beginning and also manage the vendors and the city staff, and keeping the project moving is going to be critical. They know how these projects should turn out. They know when the vendor's trying to, not telling the truth or maybe being a little optimistic about things. So I think that that's going to help the city keep on track, again, similar to the EAM software and the pre-work that's going on. Bay Corps started meeting last week with finance and community development staff to start on the pre-work for the ERP, and so that involves some of the data cleanup and some standardization of like upstreet names and things like that, some real basic stuff to get that, make sure the data that's going in is good. So I'm, this, the amendment two, or if they're on track, is for the EAM software, and that involves not just project management, but as I mentioned in the last item, configuration of the software as well. I'm very confident in the 12-month schedule for that. I'm optimistic about the 15-month schedule for the ERP, but we'll monitor that throughout the contract to see how it's going, see how the vendor's doing, and how smooth the project is going. There are going to be hiccups in these projects. They aren't going to go absolutely perfect. No project I've ever been involved with, whether it be from a design, engineering, from software to construction, goes perfect. There are always little bumps in the road along the way, but I'm optimistic about both of them, and I think we've got a good team together with Bay Corps, and I think we've selected, or selecting two good vendors for these first two pieces of software. And one thing I wanted to mention, too, is some of the staff we brought on, I mean, one of the staff that's here experienced the last project and learned a lot from that. But some of the new staff we brought on, Zach Jardine, they had EAM and ERP software and Oswego that they worked with. He's, in fact, as we've started the pre-work for the EAM software, he's reached out to Oswego for some of the structure and some of the information they used in their software. It's a whole different software system, but still a lot of the same basic ideas behind and structure behind it. Amy Emery, the new Community Economic Development Director, had experience in Naperville with an implementation of ERP software, so she's very familiar with that, both the good and the bad that she experienced there. So she's coming in with eyes wide open, very prepared to work with Bay Corps and work with BSN A on the implementation. She's, the community development staff as a whole is very excited to get this moving, so they actually have functioning software that works and makes their jobs easier. And then even Consuela Argulis also experienced ERP software elsewhere, too. So we've got some new staff expertise or experience, at least, dealing with these systems from other municipalities. It's going to be very helpful moving forward with this. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions about Bay Corps amendments. Mary is also here to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Alderman, questions, comments? Alderman Weidner?
Is there a limit on the number of, like, back-and-forth staff can communicate with Bay Corps on different issues? Or there's no limit?
No, we're here for you. We don't care when you call or how you get us, text us, call us.
Available all week long during normal working hours, I imagine?
Call us after hours, too. We don't care.
Okay.
We're here for you, and your project's success is a direct reflection of our success. This is one in the same.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Here's to the first perfect project. I recommend City Council pass a resolution approving contract amendments one and two to the professional services agreement with Bay Corps Group, approved with resolution
Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Take a breath. That was all done. Thank you. And thank you again, Mary, for coming and staying and answering all our questions. It's great. Onto number five, consideration of request to assign two elected officials to work with staff on the Veterans Memorial renovation. Director Kukler?
Thank you. The memorial is in need of updating and renovating. There's some things like remove all the fountain that's out there that's staining the existing concrete that staff wants to take care of. There's some concrete issues to take care of. We'd like, we've had a lot of suggestions from a variety of people over the years, varying from very simple updates to it to very complex and expensive updates to it. So we thought it'd be a good idea to request a couple of elected officials to work with staff to help develop, to work through that stuff and develop a recommendation for city council consideration. And I think depending on how complex or expensive the solution would be, it could potentially be budgeted as soon as next fiscal year, or it might have to be planned for a little further out. So I defer to city councils who you might want to assign to work with us.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
I would like to volunteer.
I'd volunteer if it's appropriate for me to work on that. I like the way things are going out there. I'd like to help.
Okay, one moment. I think we have someone else who would like to volunteer. Alderman Agustinovic?
Yes, I'd like to volunteer also to assist with this.
Alderman Weidner?
Yeah, I'm not volunteering for this committee, but I just wonder if other volunteers are going to make up the committee. I know there's groups that are involved in the maintenance and upkeep of some of the landscaping and things like that, and they've expressed interest, I think, in participating with the group or having input into the discussions.
Well, first of all, I do know that the TAC has been working for the last several years about a piece of artwork that would be put into the memorial before we even realized that the whole structure would be, you know, completely gutted or however it's going to be done. So that maybe there is somebody from TAC that would like to be on that committee. Director Kukler, do you have maybe somebody from WIB? I know that they're interested in the gardens and flowers.
Yeah, I think Dorothy Dear emailed last week and requested that somebody from WIB be involved. And certainly I've heard people from TAC talk about the artwork, so it'd probably be appropriate to involve at least one person from each one of those groups to just work with staff and the elected officials.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, Mayor?
I will defer to Alderman Agustinovic. Let him take it.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, so Alderman Lockett and Alderman Agustinovic, you're, I think you're both willing to do this? Okay, might be a difficult project. Maybe not quite as long as the Route 56 Work Group, which took like 10 years, but that's great. Okay, we need a motion. Alderman Davalos, are you ready?
Sure. I'm just going to get my right motion here. Recommend the City Council assign Alderman.
Lockett?
Lockett and Alderman Agustinovic to work with city staff to develop a recommendation for the Veterans Memorial renovation.
Second? Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Davalos and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for volunteering, both of you. Okay, number six, review and file Public Works Department FY 2024 work program and decision package status report. This is a information only, but does anyone have any questions at this time? Comments? Nothing? Okay. Then we'll go on. We have nothing under miscellaneous, and all we need is a motion. Oh, one moment, Mayor?
Just a reminder that on the 12th, we're having a public information meeting here at City Hall about the Route 59 multi-use path project. If you have an interest in seeing how that might be presented, or questions about what would be involved, this is a project that has been anticipated for a long, long time. It's needed in terms of the safety of our citizens and their ability to transverse that area safely and efficiently. So it is a big deal. It's going to make a change up there for the better. If you have an interest in finding out what's going on, or if you have suggestions on how you might make that a better plan, Thursday, October 12th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., stop here at City Hall and leave your input. Thank you.
Okay, that would be this Thursday.
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, now a motion. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion to adjourn by Alderman Kruckenberg, second by Alderman Lockett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.
This conference is no longer being recorded.